Is that on?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Is that on?
This is Palmdale.
It wouldn't hurt.
We're gonna have a few brief statements and then we will take some questions. I'm gonna introduce Captain Ron Schaefer will be the first.
You hear him?
And it will be followed by Mayor Hopkin.
Captain, I'm Captain Ron Schaefer, I'm the unit commander for Palmdale Sheriff's Station. And along the lines of the press release that we published earlier, it was on June 10th at approximately 3:39 hours in the morning, a passerby noticed a male who was later identified as 24-year-old Robert L. Fuller. He was hanging from a tree in the 38,300 block of 9th Street East in the city of Palmdale. Personnel from the adjacent fire station responded and determined that he had passed. The homicide bureau and the Los Angeles County Coroner's Office responded to the scene. Although the investigation is ongoing, it appears that Mr. Fuller has tragically died by suicide.
That's a lie! That's a lie! That's wrong! No peace! 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 No peace!
Read the truth!
No peace!
You have no evidence.
He's trying to give you the coroner's initial impression.
Get another coroner! It's not done! It's not done! It's not done!
Let him speak.
It's 2020.
It's not done!
Let him speak it out.
So why would you put out a public statement saying that it was possible suicide if you don't have any evidence?
You have to prove it! You have to prove it!
Who made that assumption?
Do you guys remember what the first coroner said about George Floyd? Remember what they said about George Floyd, the first coroner? We need to get another coroner!
Yes!
We need another coroner!
Let's go!
We need independent autopsy!
Autopsy report says she had no injuries when she was shot eight times by the police and murdered in her own home.
Can you guys mishandle every big media case? We have no faith in you after this whole Gabriel thing just happened. And this is now...
No faith!
This fight with the black community, y'all so quick to sweeping under the rug. You don't have the city's faith at all. And I know y'all don't seem surprised or shocked by it, but we need complete transparency with this.
There's no meaning for this level! There's no meaning!
I can handle this, you guys. That way it's nonviolent. That's what we're looking for.
Maybe someone outside the city.
Yeah, I just... No, no, it's definitely...
Our job is to serve and protect.
Somebody in there. And we don't feel like we're protected. I have three black children. And they should be able to go to the store with no problem.
Yes.
I shouldn't feel... I shouldn't feel in fear for them to walk to the store and go be killed. That's not okay. It's not okay.
Why are we signing petitions to fucking make lynching illegal? And then this happens right away? Why is that going around everywhere? And why are we saying it's a suicide before we're trying to pass a petition?
And he wasn't killed in a backyard. Can you humorize him?
Why was it right here? Why was it right here in public, in front of City Hall, next to a church, in front of a library? Why was it like that? Who would do that? No black man would hang himself in public like that! And I'll tell you that! I'll tell you that!
Let them read their report.
Hey, let them read their report. Hey, let them read their report. Hey, let them read their report.
Hey, let them read their report. Hey, let them read their report. Where's the surveillance?
Where's the...
Where's the video at?
Who found him?
Read the report! Somebody said, "Who?"
Read the report!
Read the report! Read the report!
You will not make me believe that on this courtyard, there is not surveillance with a...
There's no surveillance! Somebody already knew that! It's a damn shame! It's a damn shame! It's a damn shame! It's a damn shame! And how are you not crying? How are you looking at us like this?
Like with no sympathy?
No sympathy? You're supposed to be guarding this place. How are you looking at us like that?
This could be your side!
How are you looking at us like that?
Just because of the color of his skin and somebody didn't like him.
Where's your heart, bro? It's not on your sleeve. It's not on your sleeve. It's not under that badge. I'll tell you that. Where is it at? Where is it at?
I think if we continue with the report, then if we have questions, I think we want to hear from everyone.
We just want to see if surveillance.
Let them get through their comments. We do have family...
We just don't want to be lied to. So to sit here and tell us that ye committed suicide, in case you haven't noticed, we have a history of...
Tell the truth. Tell the truth.
We don't like ropes around our necks.
Are you a mom?
Right!
It was a message. It was a message from the protests that we had in Palmdale and one in Lancaster. Because you executed that 63-year-old man.
Speak with your chest, bro.
We are all the same. Look at you guys. We are all the same people.
The investigation is continuing and a full autopsy is being completed.
Bring in outsiders.
Also... There has been contact with his family and to make sure that this investigation is continuing and we get a full understanding of how his death occurred. If anyone has information about Mr. Fuller or the incident, his recent travels and where he's been, where he's been staying, we encourage you to call our homicide bureau so we can get a complete picture.
Bullshit!
The fire department doesn't have any cameras? Say that again.
323-890-5500.
Say that again.
They have surveillance. They have surveillance. Where are the surveillance? We need to pull the surveillance.
It's time to pull the surveillance.
Come on!
I hope you're ready.
Surveillance! Surveillance! No justice, no peace, surveillance! That's not fair! That hurts! That hurts! That hurts! We have kids that hurt! You don't understand our pain!
There is a lot of commentary about the benefit or the use or the existence of video camera and there are no video cameras used.
That's bullshit! That is bullshit! That is a goddamn lie! That's a goddamn lie!
We're City Hall! There's a fucking lie, bro!
That's not fair!
It's a fucking lie! It's a lie! It's a lie! You looked already, it's a lie!
Say that again!
What's that camera that's out here on top of the building?
It's City Hall!
There's a camera right there.
I have somebody on camera that's standing at work here!
Michael brought up a great point. Those are not... Those aren't cameras.
What is it, to scare people?
They're laser beams like you put up by your house with the red and the green.
That's a lie! What the fuck is that about?
Now, now, now... 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 Now, now, now...
Say that again!
What's that camera that's out here on top of the building? There's a camera right there.
I have somebody on camera that's standing at work here!
Michael brought up a great point. Those are not... Those aren't cameras.
What is it, to scare people?
They're laser beams like you put up by your house with the red and the green.
That's a lie! What the fuck is that about?
Now, now, now... 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 Now, now, now...
Bullshit! Bullshit!
Walmart laser beams.
Yeah, that's what he's telling you, baby.
You could get some Walmart little laser beams.
He's telling you, City Hall has no cameras! You guys can't even protect our city then! You can't protect our city!
We know what's going on! You can't hear something else! There's no suicide! There's no suicide right now! His family's saying they want the suicide! Are you trying to tell us they need suicide? Are you trying to tell us they need suicide?
That's crazy!
Hell, nobody!
That's out! That is out! I know! I know!
Thank you for the question, guys! And if you don't even know if he... You tell us that the autopsy is trying to figure out if he committed suicide, but then you tell the city he committed suicide? You don't even know and you tell us? Fuck you! That's what I said, you guys!
Yep! 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 Yep!
Maybe we'll have faith that you're telling the truth. Maybe we'll have faith that you're not covering the truth.
Are you listening?
They're not even listening.
Are you listening? Are you listening? Talk amongst yourselves. Talk amongst yourselves. Are you fucking listening? Are you fucking listening? Apologize, motherfucker! Apologize! Were you listening? Because you weren't listening, bitch! You weren't listening! I saw you, bro! We all saw you! We saw you talking amongst each other. This one woman is standing there trying to fucking vocalize how she feels! And you can't fucking listen!
Hey, we all feeling it.
But you can't cuss, sweetheart. Just let's get in respect. Because you know what? We not here to do that. We not... That's what we're fighting for. It's okay. You don't have to act like that. You don't have to act like that. They already acted as we in us. That's okay. It's okay. It's okay. It's okay. But it's not okay. Because that's why we here.
You know what? And you are 100% right. I'm gonna get away from this thing here. You are 100% right. Oh, I got the microphone. Anyways, you're 100% right. It is not right.
It's not.
It's damn wrong that this has happened. And that's why we're working really hard. I got the vice mayor here. I've got my pastor here, Ralph Parrott. We're working hard to try to figure out exactly what happened. I cannot predict... I can't pull it out of a crystal ball what the coroner and the sheriff department's gonna find here. We have to rely on the contract sheriff department and their downtown detectives to figure this out. What was put out on media...
AV Times. Was irresponsible. It was irresponsible.
What was put out on media was the repeat of what the initial preliminary findings were from the sheriff's...
Speculation.
What was the initial... How long did it take to accumulate that initial perspective of the crime scene? Was it an hour later?
That morning, I was out there. That morning, I was taking down the tape.
You need to take time to do the autopsy before you even determine it's a suicide.
Then why didn't you label it a suicide if it's still under investigation?
We didn't label it.
He just said it. He just said it.
You asked me. I can't say that.
But you're speaking for him. He represents you.
No, no, I'm speaking for the city right now.
Okay.
He represents you. He's supposed to...
Are you guys saying he tried to commit suicide?
That was what the preliminary impression was from the coroner and the investigators that were out there.
Just because you're hanging from a tree doesn't mean you want to commit a suicide.
Now, I am damn determined to find out. And that's why the city manager and I have been working the phones to talk with other investigative agencies that may be able to assist us in this process. What could help us more than anything is, like the captain said, the hardest thing that they've got going right now is trying to figure out what was going on with Mr. Fuller the last few weeks. Where was he? Who is he in contact with?
No, what happened with him that day? We don't want to know weeks ago. We want to know what happened that day.
Yeah, but it's things that lead up to it, okay?
Yeah, like hours before. Like you could look for CCTV hours before. You guys have cameras on all of your traffic handles.
His family, if you're incinerating, his family's not gonna hang him from a tree.
No. So those are low resolution and all they can barely notice is a cut.
Do you see people if they're following him?
Okay, we have a question. Are you saying there's no cameras around here? Is that what you're saying?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. If you want to come over Monday, I'll take you up to the traffic information center.
We're gonna be here Monday.
Monday? What time Monday? What time Monday, sir? Excuse me? You said Monday. What time Monday?
Call over here, just call.
No, I would like to know. Because I would like to be here. Because I want to hear from you. I would like to personally be here Monday.
Well, she had a question about the cameras.
Yeah, I do too. That's what I would like to know.
But notice that the cameras aren't here.
So there are no cameras around here? Circling around this City Hall building? There are no...
Did you go to each restaurant?
I'll roll against the question. So there's a repeat... Somebody answered, Amber. Why are there no cameras at a government building? That doesn't make any sense. Why are there no cameras? I want to try to... I want to try to carry on the question of the government building. That makes no sense.
I'm sorry, go ahead. She's trying to explain to what we're asking.
There's cameras on the traffic stop.
There is a question about cameras. I want to try to lay a little answer to that. So we do not have cameras installed around our City Hall complex. Here in any of the buildings, on the buildings or in the parks that's behind City Hall.
Oh, wow.
That is the current state of...
That's negligent.
Yes, that's negligent!
There was a second question about cameras on the traffic signals. And so there aren't cameras on our traffic signals. There are cameras...
You guys plan on putting in cameras?
They're used for monitoring traffic, being able to look at if there's traffic congestion.
What about a homicide?
They do not record what they see. So their vehicles are recording of what you see around the city to look at at later times. They look like they committed a crime. That is not a second system that we have this day. And I hope this is not a homicide.
Sure was his body actually found. Yeah, what exact tree was it at?
JJ can answer that because he talked to the firemen that went out...
Because if we're putting candles on the wrong tree, then we look ridiculous.
No, they'd rather put stuff with the birds to kill the birds.
Right! In bird seed.
I want to show you.
Whatever they're reporting, I think is recording something that's going on.
So what did you say those words again, sir? You said you wanted to show us that those were related?
No, I say if you want to come by and look at the traffic cameras, but there's nothing to see. All it does is how many cars are right there.
What time Monday?
If you run a red light, you will get a ticket in the mail. It will take a picture of your car. And it'll write the plate.
No, 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 no. She, the lady back there in a t-shirt, asked about the things and cameras and the signals. Those are low resolution and are not recorded. Those only trigger the signals.
So was there a signal trigger?
Are you putting in cameras? Are you...
No, it was not getting into budget.
What are you doing now? What are you doing now?
It's a hard time. What did they...
He's a buck roly.
Why is he hanging? It's so sad! We're in jail! And I got people saying they work for the city and it's cameras.
Period!
I have people on my life telling you that.
Period!
You and Terry Lee. You and Terry Lee. Something about Terry Lee. Terry Lee, let's see.
This is a racist issue. This is a racist issue.
It's really hard to hear a lot of people talking all at once. So we could...
And this is a problem.
We could narrow it down. The world knew about this. There'll be thousands of people outside this town.
No, we're not the world, I'm just kidding. I'm literally...
And any hair in the little newspaper you can see, it says a suicide suspect. You said that was your preliminary report.
No, 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 it wasn't mine.
He said that. The sheriff said that.
Somebody said you hung the tree. And they posted, you know, signs. That was it. They didn't do no autopsy, no nothing yet.
But you released that to people.
Whatsoever. Bring the sheriff back. Yeah, yeah.
How many hangings? How many overhangings?
How many real racist killing are going on that are undocumented? How many?
Everybody's got the same thing. How's a black man hang himself? Death is...
In front of City Hall!
So why is it a suicide?
That's why they don't...
God!
We don't think it's a suicide.
You found him hanging, but it's a suicide? Are you fucking kidding me?
No, no, we agree. We don't think it's a suicide.
To settle us down. You to try to settle us down, you think that's gonna work?
I think maybe another court or you can pick that up.
Okay, I have a question.
And now you're playing with somebody's death. That's not funny. So call the coroner. No, you call the coroner.
They seem to be productive. They want to ask one question at a time. We'll try to answer.
He doesn't even...
I got a question. I got a question.
He's telling jokes.
I got a question. All right. There's two, four, five of you. If you could each answer with a yes or a no, this is the question. Do you think a black man would hang himself in public? Yes or no? Let's start with you. Let's start... Hey, hey, hey! Let's start with you. Let's start with you. Yes or no?
With the situation that George just...
I'll give... I'll give my answer.
He's... No, we're not gonna make a stigma around black health. Black people commit su... I'm not saying he committed suicide. We're not gonna create a stigma that black people don't hang themselves. I'm here for the moment. But we're not gonna say black people don't hang themselves. No, what we're saying is he didn't hang himself. We don't think he hung himself. That's what we're saying. I don't think he hung himself. I don't think he hung himself.
I agree. I need to be...
There are a couple of things that we are gonna have to get answered on behalf of them. So that we know our next step to go forward. Now, we know what stance we're in right now.
And leave him alone, too.
We know who we need to be talking to. And that's amongst ourselves. And we need to be able to figure out an organized direction that we're gonna take from this point on. And so before we do that, before we do that, we're gonna hear what they need to say. And the important thing is that everything that they're saying is on camera right now. So the main thing that we need to do is allow them to get that out. So that we have something to hold them accountable for.
Yeah.
So from this time, we're gonna let them say that stuff. We're gonna give the family, if they want to speak, an opportunity to speak. And then after that, we're gonna hold them accountable for every single word that they say. If y'all have questions, make sure that y'all position those questions in a way that makes sure that they have to answer it in something that they can be accountable for.
That's specific.
So I'm gonna have JJ address a couple of things here as our city manager. And but again, we're as interested as every single person in this room is to get to the bottom of this. Again, my children and my grandchildren play in this park every day.
But they're white.
Yeah, but they're white.
Hey, y'all...
What if they're in there? What if your grandchild...
Y'all ain't helping our cause!
Y'all, one accord, y'all. One accord. One accord on our end. We gotta be on one accord. Yep. The first thing I want to say is our heart goes out to the family and goes out to Robert. Okay? We are not gonna let a stone go unturned in this investigation. And we're gonna keep at it. I know you want answers. We want answers. Okay? We have preliminary answers. They're going further. Okay? All I can tell you is we care for the right answer. And if it takes three days or three months, we owe it to Robert and we owe it to his family to come up with the right answer. So I appreciate Aiyande asking for proper dialogue. You know, I'll answer questions, but if we get into yelling and screaming, then we can't answer. It's not productive. Okay? So, ma'am?
Can I say something?
Hold on. I'm pointing to the lady with the gold on.
Yeah, I'm just curious. If there's an investigation, why is it not a crime scene around there?
Thank you!
Investigation.
Better matter, guys! Better matter!
The crime scene is investigated the day of and cleared the day of. The investigation continues because they're looking for things beyond the location. And that is what's continuing. What was discovered the day of was captured, memorialized, and will go into their report.
So then can you answer why there's no cameras?
So, second question. If it's still under investigation, why is it automatically being deemed in the newspaper as a suicide when investigation's not finished?
Preliminary. Preliminary filing. And this happens in the majority of the cases that the coroner's office investigates. Because they will have a preliminary finding. And then from there, they went on to a full autopsy. And all that information is gonna have to come out in their final report. And I did want to point out that this is our 15th suicide in Palmdale this year. The majority of...
Excuse me. You said it's being investigated still, so why are you labeling it a suicide?
Well, because the preliminary report came back as a suicide, right? So...
I don't know why you're smirking. I don't think that's a clever clip or I don't know why you're smirking when you say that.
Bring the sheriff back.
Yeah, yeah.
So why isn't it a suicide? You found him hanging, but it's a suicide? Are you fucking kidding me?
To settle us down. You to try to settle us down, you think that's gonna work?
Okay, I have a question.
And now you're playing with somebody's death, that's not funny. So call the coroner, no, you call the coroner.
He doesn't even say anything ever.
He keeps telling jokes.
I got a question. Alright, there's two, four, or five of you. If you could each answer with a yes or a no, this is the question. Do you think a black man would hang himself in public? Yes or no? Let's start with you. Let's start, hey, 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 let's start with you. Let's start with you. Yes or no?
With the situation that George just described.
I'll give, I'll give my answer. I don't think he would.
We're not gonna make a stigma around black health. Black people commit su- I'm not saying he committed suicide. We're not gonna create a stigma that black people don't hang themselves. I'm here for all of them, but we're not gonna say that. Black people don't hang themselves.
No, what we're saying is, he didn't hang himself. He don't think he hung himself. That's what we're saying, I don't think he hung himself. I don't think he hung himself.
Listen, there are, there are a couple of things that we are gonna have to get answered on behalf of them, so that we know our next step to go forward. Now, we know what stance we, we're in right now. We know who we need to be talking to, and that's amongst ourselves. And we need to be able to figure out an organized direction that we're gonna take from this point on. So before we do that, before we do that, we're gonna hear what they need to say. And the important thing is, that everything that they're saying is on camera right now. So the, the, the main thing that we need to do is allow them to get that out, so that we have something to hold them accountable for. We're gonna let them say that stuff. We're gonna give the, the family, if they wanna speak, an opportunity to speak. And then after that, we're gonna hold them accountable for every single word that they say. If y'all have questions, make sure that y'all position those questions in a, in a way that makes sure that they have to answer it in something that they be accountable for.
So, I'm gonna have JJ address a couple of things here as our city manager. And, um, but again, we're as interested as every single person in this room is, to get to the bottom of this. Again, my children and my grandchildren play in this park every day.
Yeah, but they're white.
What if your, what if your grandchild's black?
Y'all ain't helping our cause.
One, one accord, y'all, one accord. One accord on our end, we gotta be on one accord.
The first thing I wanna say is our heart goes out to the family, and goes out to Robert. We are not gonna let a stone go unturned in this investigation. And, we're gonna keep at it. I know you want answers, we want answers. Okay, we have preliminary answers. They're going further, okay? All, all I can tell you is, we care for the right answer. And if it takes three days or three months, we owe it to Robert, and we owe it to his family to come up with the right answer. So I appreciate Ayande asking for proper dialogue. You know, I'll answer questions, but if we get into yelling and screaming, then we can't answer, it's not productive. Okay, so.
Can I say something?
Hold on, I, I'm pointing to the lady with the gold one.
Um, yeah, I'm just curious, if there's an investigation, why is it not a crime scene around it?
Better answer.
The crime scene was investigated the day of and cleared the day of. The investigation continues, because they're looking for things beyond the location. And that is what's continuing. What was discovered the day of was captured, memorialized, and will go into their report.
So then can you answer my little favor?
So, second question. If, it's still under investigation, why is it automatically being deemed in the newspaper as a suicide when investigations aren't finished?
Preliminary, preliminary finding, and this happens in majority of the cases that the coroner's office investigates, is they will have a preliminary finding. And then from there, they went on to a full autopsy, and all that information is gonna have to come out in, in their final report.
And I, and I did wanna point out that this is our fifteen suicide in Palmdale this year.
Excuse me, excuse me, you said it is, it's being investigated still, so why are you labeling it?
Well, because the preliminary would be met as a, as a suicide, right? So.
I, I don't know why you're smirking. I would, I don't think that's a clever clip, or I don't know why you're smirking when you say that. If you're saying that it came out as a preliminary, then you shouldn't be saying, you should say alleged.
In a sense, in a sense, suspect. We've had fifteen suicides, and now an alleged fifteen suicides.
Alleged.
But, it does not minimize the impact of fifteen lives are not with us right now. And almost double that have attempted suicide. We have a real issue with mental health. Especially post-COVID. For the majority of this year, we've had more deaths from suicide than we have with COVID. So, we are trying to invest in mental health. We've been doing that for over two months, okay? So there's a real message there to share.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, a, a couple of questions from the media. We would love, of course, to hear from the family. And to the investigation, if you can share with us, please. I mean, has there been any actual investigation, talking to the family or anybody at all about the possibility of foul play on this?
Is there surveillance?
There's been limited conversation with family. But I can explain.
I mean, are you actively pursuing any other than suicide?
Who did the preliminary report? Who's that, who's responsible for that?
The coroner's office.
And how did you guys?
So, you had a question on separation?
Yes.
So you have the city, okay?
No, 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 I wanted to know the separation of the homicide versus the suicide.
How can you tell the difference if you haven't talked?
You haven't done it yet.
Okay, so. Okay, okay.
Uh, is the family able to obtain a separate corner from your whole department? Are they, are they able to obtain their own corner? Cause I think they should. We, we already know about George Floyd. We, we, we know about the first one, they should get their own, they should get their own. Are, are they able to do that? Is that, is that able to happen?
I, I spoke to the sister earlier today. When she gets here, she, I think she's about an hour out or whatever. We walked her that up, and we had that conversation.
You should.
Like, when, when, I told you that we're not gonna leave a stone unturned. We're not gonna leave a stone unturned.
That's what they said three weeks about, uh, three weeks ago about George Floyd. But you can fix here. You can fix here. That's what we're trying to say. That's what we're trying to say.
Okay, so you were stating that there was fifteen suicides in, in the city so far, right? And how many of the, allegedly, how many of those have been an African-American person? Just a question.
I don't have that data, but if, if I get your name and number, I'll, I'll find that out, I don't have it.
How many?
My nephew killed himself, so suicides happen to black folks. We have to recognize this. My nephew hung himself. So what we wanna know is just the truth, when it's the truth. We don't need to know how many of the other ones were. We need to know what happened here, and why this young man is hanging in the, in the hall. You know, see, in the middle of the street. Black people kill themselves, it happens. But we just need to know the truth. We don't care about the others right now, we need to know what happened here. Make the man know what happened here, and how, how a suicide can be determined. I'm sorry, how could a suicide and a, and a homicide be determined differently? If you don't know all of the answers? If you don't know his mental health, if you don't know his history, how is that determine a suicide? Does he hang different? That's what we need to know from the coroner. And until we get that answer, the man is just, has been killed, we don't know how. It's a possible homicide.
Um, will you guys be running an internal investigation within your department? And then also, um, your coroner to get a better understanding of who was, who was actually, um, appearing? Like, what is his past history with dealing, um, with, with the community?
I, I, and I think it goes to the part of the frontiers earlier. So, I just wanna explain, the city of Palmdale doesn't have police department. We contract out with the LA County Sheriff's Department. The coroner is the LA County coroner. So, they are doing that work. We are gonna get all the reports, okay? And then we are gonna discuss with the family. We do not have all the information. And to the gentleman's point, when the family gets here, and we get more information, and the investigation, and they find out where he was living, and they ask those questions, like, there's a lot of unanswered questions to why we're standing up here to give you preliminary answers to some of these questions. We can't speculate, okay? So, my commitment to you, and our city's commitment to you, and the sheriff's department's commitment to you, is when we have more information, we will be one hundred percent transparent. That's my promise, and my commitment to you, okay?
Can we bring the ABC Times?
You can bring everybody.
No, I'm saying, are you guys able to organize the ABC Times? Cause they're.
That's a news agency like these other guys, I don't know what we can do with that. They can do it.
Why is it just now being televised?
While you are investigating, and you don't have facts, can you promise the community that you won't continue to talk about suicide? That sways perception. If you don't know anything, maybe you can. We will talk about things further, but can we finish? What you have is ABC walked in maybe twenty minutes ago, and the first thing you said is, we have had fifteen, uh, suicides in Palmdale. That's the first thing that the world is gonna hear, when you don't have facts. Can you promise the community that you're gonna say, when we know more, we will tell you more, and we won't offer information that doesn't pertain to this case?
Exactly.
And I will own that, I will own that from yesterday, in front of our rebuttal. Can I also ask, that we stop talking about lynchings?
This is a possible lynching as much as it's a possible suicide.
Can I respond to your question? What you're saying, can we stop talking about lynchings?
As this came, not just the, not others, but so.
This should be an either or.
Because that was our response yesterday. When, when we saw on social media, then people were alleging that there was a lynching, right? We had preliminary, preliminary information. So, to the lady's point in the back, maybe we should've said an alleged suicide, right?
It's just as much a lynching as it is a suicide.
Can I, can I, can I answer?
I have a question.
First, you cannot, no community will guarantee you they have freedom of speech. They can say, they can allege whatever they want. You're held to a different accountability than they are. It's also what you're saying. This situation, in such a hard time, in the middle of racial relations, is why it's being characterized as such. And in a country that has failed to really recognize our history, this is a time when people are trying to get acknowledgement. So it's, it's beyond just this case, we need information on this case. But you can't ask the community to talk about stuff that we've been trying to suppress for, for decades. So until you can say it was not a lynching, you can't say, don't say it was. Cause you're alleging that it wasn't in the first place. So they're gonna say what they think until you, and the coroner, and everyone that's a part of this department says, this is exactly what it was until then. You can't expect anything else but fear and suspicion.
Exactly. Yes!
Yes, absolutely. That's why we've been out there at every single one, the protests in this city, every single one of them.
Really?
We're out there, we've been out there. If you were there, we were there. If you didn't see me, you wouldn't. Hold on, I had to put a bandana and my ball cap on, then maybe that makes a little more sense. But then, we got out there, every single one. Oh, no, no. So, you're right.
I agree.
Again, I, I just have two questions again. One is, excuse me, this is for everybody. Um, is there surveillance cameras in this park, in the center? And are they, there's not? Not even the restaurants? So, that's. Okay, my second question is, why has there been, this happened two days ago, why has there been no news? This is to you news reporters. Why has there been no news? I, I've looked through the news, there is no news. Only ABC Times is the only people, and Katie, yeah. Why, why is this not being publicized like every other situation?
I found out on Facebook.
Yesterday morning, the city had a release on this. And I, I should've changed the words, and I, and I'll own that.
And how come you, how come you guys always put "black man killed" and "black man lynched"?
We, we did not, it's the city, that was.
You're asking for us not to talk about lynchings, and you said that you would promise that you would, you know, try to not say those things, and deem it that it's a suicide? However, I've been out here, Memorial Day made my fourteenth year. Fourteen years, living in Antelope Valley. I have birthed four, raised five sons. They used to go to the elementary school here in Palmdale. Every other day, there was a family who has a Confederate flag in their yard. I am so sorry. So when we see that, and I guess maybe there was some type of war within the family, cause one day it was up, one day it was down. One day it was up, one day it was down. So when we drive around in our neighborhood, and you tell us not to say, oh, it was a lynching, and we have a young man in his twenties who was just at a rally, marching for Black Lives Matter, and he would take his life?
Wait, he was marching up there?
He would take his life? And then he hangs himself in a tree? Now, people come and suicide, we're not gonna dismiss that thought. But most black people, we do not jump out of trees. And hang ourselves.
Gotta go.
That's why we're ready to get the answer.
So, when will we have new answers? How long is it gonna take?
In my fourteen years of living out here, I have never heard anything like this out. I mean, things happen, but I ain't never heard no black man killed.
Government building, why is there no cameras on this government building? And why is there no plan to put cameras on this government?
The press could come out, but y'all can't put no cameras on this?
If, if, if we be with the family, and we be with the community leaders, and that is a priority, and that's what, then I'm sure we will do that. But I think, we will.
There's community leaders all sitting right here. It's been a priority. It's been a priority, sir.
Um, I just wanna say something, we were out there, we were marching, and we were saying stuff like, we are gonna make the change, we're gonna do this, we're gonna get out and vote, we're gonna do all this stuff. I just wanna ask, what you can promise us that you can do for our city to start making changes? Because there's just a lot of people that are hurt and not okay with what's going on in the city.
Prevention of suicide of black men, if you feel that, it is black men.
I'm saying, we're out here marching for love, unity, we're out here marching for like, making a change. We're gonna get out there and vote and make the change ourselves. I wanna know what you guys are trying to do that's gonna make the change? And like, start helping our community? Because it's just like, a lot of people are hurt in our community, it's just like, we're not happy about things, you know?
We're in a bunch of those marches, we were there.
But like, yeah, we're, you guys, you guys, you guys have been voted in to represent people. I just wanna know, on, like.
This takes more than marches.
There is a lot of mental stresses going on because of COVID. We're experiencing it here in Palmdale, just like in the entire Antelope Valley, like in the state of California, and all of the United States. The mental health services, this is why the issue of suicide, why fourteen names or fourteen persons have been mentioned. Mental health is a, is a deficit in the Antelope Valley.
Everywhere.
We need, everywhere, but particularly here in the Antelope Valley. This is a major, major concern. And we are addressing it as a city. Talk about solutions for certain problems, mental health is an issue that we need to address. So that's why we're talking about that. I just wanna make. I'm the mayor, I'm the mayor pro tempore of the city. I'm here as a supporter of the mayor, the sheriff, city manager. We will not allow, and we have told the family that's been here already, we will not allow this to stop until we have a definite answer from the proper investigative agencies. Wherever the facts may lead, we're going to go there, okay? We promise you that, and that's what we're going to do.
So are we writing this on COVID, or is this a mental health issue? Cause you said that in the same sentence. Or is it a homicide?
Because of staying home.
Or homicide.
Because of staying in order, so many people losing their jobs, people staying in home, businesses have been shut down. There's been an increase in mental health issues in the community.
Or do you think the increase in mental health in the community is a black man driving by with a Confederate flag?
We are hard pressed to address that because of the limited resources. But we will do everything possible to address that, and we're going to get to the bottom of the investigation of this terrible.
If we're not able to sit at one of this blocks in front of our house.
Or right here, there's three right here, ma'am.
That's so that we can broadcast the meeting, so you can watch it.
This guy's like Trump.
In middle school, where are they here? Why, why are they not hiding? Us, why are they, okay.
Go.
So you said you were at a poker factory, and, okay, word of mouth, you were, you were getting people's contact information, and your name, you said you were gonna talk about, it's been leaked. Why haven't you done this? And you haven't even posted the budget, where are the budgets?
If this is a white guy killed, were you thinking about serious?
Who's in charge of keeping you with your community? And giving them the latest? And, and for you guys as well, see, if you guys are gonna publish this, can anybody here get, get an actual copy of this? What's going on around, because seriously, the media coverage is not doing.
We need names, what are y'all names? In the front. What are those cameras, sir?
Why isn't that the fact that only one cop showed up? Why isn't that the fact that some people have like a little Google at the park? Ten cops will show up, ten cops will show up. No, barely people showed up when he was, when he was found. What is, does these bodies smell? Why was, why, why, why isn't that the thing? Like, see, you guys hold this everywhere.
And if there's police patrol, like, how did you guys see it prior to somebody showing you guys the body hanging?
You guys state your guys' names.
If y'all have been walking with us, I just wanna say, y'all started off on a pretty awful foot. You guys are very committed to the nation's issues. So I don't know if you're learning fast enough. But, what, with this first report, if you've already admitted that you don't have enough evidence to rule a suicide or homicide, like, I don't know, you're just, not, I don't know. What was on his person? Did he have a cell phone? Is there any, any way you could track his location otherwise?
Yes.
You don't necessarily need a camera here, but you could maybe find him walking somewhere around the road. Find out there are people walking somewhere.
Other cameras.
And I can tell you, they're fully being vetted by the sheriff's department.
Do you guys have a cell phone?
Some of those same questions.
Excuse me, sir, my daughter has a question about the camera.
Okay, ma'am.
So, how many cameras do y'all have in this building? Y'all claim y'all don't have cameras, but it's cameras right there, right there? So, how y'all know about cameras?
That, that's the broadcast.
So you guys just put those cameras there?
So the public, so the public can watch the council, the commission, the library board, all the different meetings. That's, so you can watch it from the exterior.
What she is, what she is trying to insinuate is that there needs to be exterior cameras.
No, no, what I, what we're asking is, when we asked you about cameras, sir, in the beginning, you told us there were no cameras, nowhere, inside and out, you, you told us that there were no cameras. Okay, so, so the question was, she sat there and saw all these three cameras in here, and as an eleven-year-old, she wanted to know, she, she has to vote one day. So she wants to know, she wants to trust in your word, and you said there were no cameras.
No, she's right.
Yeah, you said no cameras.
So, so words matter, and that's why we go around shouting "Black Lives Matter", because black lives are just as important as all lives, and should not matter less. But if that were the case, we've seen the news, we know what's happening right now. And the autopsy report may have come back as a suicide, allegedly. You should have come out with a counterstatement after you reopened it saying that we apologize for saying it's a possible suicide. We are opening up the investigation, and we have yet to dismiss the idea of possible manslaughter. Are you going to put out a statement saying? Sorry, murder. Are you guys going to put out a statement saying you were quick to rush into the observation, into the case? And then, are you guys gonna say anything about it? We need official statements.
And, and as you are looking for that statement, so are we. We're trying to get the, the, to the bottom line with the coroner's office. Again, there, and we should've, we should've stated it better, that it was a preliminary, we should've stressed that. We should've used, as the gentleman said, alleged. You know, you're, you're absolutely right. But we were going off of what the coroner was telling the sheriff that was telling us, that we don't, we don't talk to the coroner.
Or was it the sheriff's report of how they found the man?
So, but you're right, and, and that is why we've asked, and that's why this guy's been on the phone half the morning for us, trying to get additional resources to assist the sheriff's department in the investigation. And that's why we're asking the public to please help us in, in determining, where's Robert been? What do you know about him? What can you not speculate? What can you defend?
Honestly?
So they can put, put this puzzle together, so they can get a better picture of what happened here.
All you need is the, is that day. That day in the day part, you do not need weeks. You need where he left from, where he was going, and you need to see if there was cameras in that perimeter. I think you guys.
If you know anybody who was with him that day, please, we put out our press release with the sheriff's information. If anybody knows where he was that day, or who he was with, please call and give that information.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I do have one question.
We're, we're families waiting.
So you, uh, you made the statement that you were going, that you were looking at outside, outside agencies to, to investigate this matter. What is the process that you're going to go through with the outside agencies to investigate the matter? What is the process? Who are the outside agencies? Who are you contacting to bring in?
You guys might answer that, they, they were, they were on the phone, I was in the office, but they were on the directly on the phone. First things first, we wanna get the report, okay? And we wanna get all the details, because a lot of the questions that were asked today haven't been answered. And until we get those answers, then we're gonna go through a reckoning of, okay? And we're gonna sit down with the family, and, you know.
Who are the outside agencies?
We're not, we're not gonna stop. If, if we're not satisfied, if the family's not satisfied, they don't know.
You guys were satisfied, we're making you one satisfied.
We already talked to this sheriff's office, okay? To say, do you, can you lend support? I know the sheriff's department, and the bishop's department has already spoken today, okay? So, we've already reached that. So, I don't know where. We're both better, thank you. We gotta get with the family, okay?
Yeah, that was a man, that's a grown man.
I have a question. What are your names?
Can you guys tell us your names? Can you guys tell us who you are?